The October 28th, 2013 meeting of the East Penn and the School District Board of School Directors is hereby called to order. Please rise and join me in the saloon.
The United States of America and its two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
The first item I have on the agenda is recognition of our national merit semifinalists. We'll call you up and present our award to you.
Good evening. This is one of the more pleasurable events that we get to do as board president. Superintendent of Schools has recognized those students who have really distinguished themselves in basically a national competition. So we take our hats off to you and your parents for bringing honor to the school district. And I want to let everyone know that we honored the students just about a half an hour, 45 minutes ago at a reception hosted by the East Penn Education Association. At that time, we got to know the students a little bit. And I'm pleased to say that of our five award winners tonight, four and a half have selected careers in math and science. I don't know, people weren't quite sure, so I counted them back. Okay. So, straight five, which I think is remarkable based on last year's group of, we had 11 semifinals last year, nine went on to careers in math and science. And I think that's what our society needs. So congratulations again for accepting a challenging future and being a part of this great country's future. So, without further ado, it's my distinct pleasure to recognize Alan Bevo. Robert Bishop. Eva D. Cohen. You played a game with me. It was nice. Remember that. You traded Guido. And Anna Overholz.
The next item I have on the agenda, a request to address the board. I have one request from Mr. Don John, John Donches of the Mayas.
Thank you, board. I have just another idea on the Hamilton Crossing TIP because I hear that may be coming forward again, at least through the Lehigh County Commissioners. And I just wanted to express possibly another way to look at this. I have it titled the Hamilton Crossing TIP. Please taxpayers, help me build because I cannot afford the high taxes. On the topic of the Hamilton Crossing Mall TIP, a more important way to understand what the big city New York developer, New York developer Tim Harrison is saying to Lehigh County and East Penn School District is really that he cannot afford to pay the taxes. They're too high. He said as much when he claimed it would, will not be possible for him to complete the project without the TIP monies. Maybe his company isn't so financially sound, or this is too much of a stretch and he can't convince the bank to loan him a little more to assure his project goes through. I don't blame him for asking for the TIP money. It's a giveaway. I blame the lawmakers for making this kind of a program in the first place. The TIP monies are just $7 million in tax reimbursement to him equaling 50% of the taxes he would pay to these taxing bodies over a 20-year period. Remember that the bonds to be floated, a $7 million bond, pay Mr. Harrison for the TIP monies. But an additional $7 million is needed to service the additional debt and 1% handling charge for LUCIDA, the authority that handles the bonds. This all gets paid out of taxes that I think should be going to pay for things like teachers, infrastructure repairs, ambulance, fire, police, any few. It's $14 million total to the seven bonds and the $7 million to pay, it's all taxes. Isn't the only money that Mr. Harrison would get. If you look at the TIP, I guess, the TIP papers that describe all that's going on, and you can get that, I have that listed right here on the website that you can link to. He's backed it in an additional $10 million in grants. Brings that total up to $24 million, about 18% of the total cost of the project. And then also you gotta think that that's $24 million less he needs to go to the bank to request, to take a loan out. Well, if you take that $24 million at a 2% interest rate over 20 years, that saves him about $28 million bucks. It's not bad. It's another $1.4 million in his pocket. That's for money that we're giving away in taxes. And then there's the other thing. The other developers have come forward saying they built the same project without the TIP. Got a link for that. Maybe we should let that happen. There's also the concern that the existing shopping malls bring a legal suit against what they see as an unfair advantage afforded to this new development because of the TIP.
Could you sum it up, Mr. Donches?
Sure. I remember one East Penn School Board member mentioning, and I'm not paraphrasing, you can't afford the taxes, leave. Well, maybe it's time to apply that to everyone, including the big city developers. Let somebody else come in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donches. The next item I have on the agenda is approval of minutes. Can I have a motion, please? Oh, it's the student government. Yeah, sorry about that.
Hi, I'm Logan Callan. This is Kathy Garrity. I'm vice president of the student government. She's secretary. We're just gonna go over a few things that have happened in school right now. First thing is Tony Sharp, Mason Trinkle, and Fergus Watson were recently chosen as members of the 2013 National Association for Musical Education on October 30th in Nashville, Tennessee. Violinist Fergus Watson will be performing as a chosen member of the National Honors Orchestra as singers Tony Sharp and Mason Trinkle, performing as members of the National Honors Course. The arrangements they have prepared will be performed in front of some of the most famous conductors in the United States, as well as over 500 other high school musicians. Also, the Student Government Association recently completed another successful homecoming week. Students around the school participated in different sphere of things throughout the week and topped it off with the homecoming dance, which brought in over 900 students. Last year, we held a fundraiser to donate money to the victims of the Boston Storm Marathon shooting, or bombing, in which we were able to donate $2,000 to the Spread the Love Foundation to help the victims in the Boston area hospital. We also donated $4,000 to Coaches vs. Cancer, along with $5,500 to step in supporting teams of the East Penn for advocacy.
Some other things going on. The Mayas girls volleyball team recently held a Dig Pink Night on October 11th in the auxiliary gym. Over the past couple of years, the team has contributed over $11,000 to the Side Out Foundation, which focuses on further breast cancer research and awareness. On November 6th, the American Red Cross Club is holding a blood drive in the auxiliary gym. Also, this club will be holding a book drive in October. Any students who donate their summer reading books will receive a voucher for next year's reading list. Last year, they collected and distributed over 1,000 books. The Mayas drama department presents Pride and Prejudice on November 7th, 8th, and 9th in auditorium. And ticket prices are $8 for a student and $10 for adults, and they will start soon.
And lastly, there is a thing about, a story doctor about Zach Miller, who was a 2006 graduate of the Mayas High School. He went to the University of Pittsburgh to become a doctor. He graduated in 2010, started working in Panther CrossFit and became a CrossFit champion. On August 4th, Zach was in a car accident and has been in a coma ever since. His father, Jack Miller, will be holding a fundraiser at Texas Roadhouse in Allentown in the near future, and the proceeds of the event will go towards Zach's medical bills.
Thank you for your report. Are there any questions or comments for our SGA representatives? None appearing. Thank you very much. We always appreciate reports on what's going on. And you're free to leave if you'd like to stay. You're welcome, but take off now. Now we'll get to approval of minutes. Can I have a motion, please? Is there any discussion or comments on the minutes? None appearing. All those in favor of approving the minutes as is, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Minutes are approved. We now have item number six on the agenda. I would like the solicitor to state that he has reviewed this motion and that it conports with Pennsylvania law.
So stated.
Thus speaketh the solicitor. Can I have a motion, please?
No, no. Second.
Is there any discussion of this motion? None appearing. Ms. Bertzel, will you call roll, please?
Mr. Arndt Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Pollockano.
Aye.
Dr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, at this point, we need to potentially discuss a timeline for replacement because as the solicitor will indicate, we have some ambiguities in Pennsylvania law that may make it necessary to have an appointment by Monday, November 11. Under the law, the board has the exclusive ability to fill the vacancy within 30 days of the date of the reservation. So taking the very conservative approach, the date of the reservation will not be, will be the date that it was actually written, which was October 15, 2013. So the 30-day clock starts from that date. Back into your, project out your meeting dates, the next scheduled meeting is November 11, which is your only scheduled meeting besides tonight. Come within that 30-day period. Okay. In the past, we have done the steps of advertising on the, our webpage and advertisements sent to the local newspapers as we do with our meetings. And then we've had a deadline for the applications. And then we've had a night. Generally, it has been prior to the meeting that we were going to appoint. And in this case, it would be the day of the meeting we were going to appoint, to have an interview, a public interview with the candidates prior to the meeting at which they would be appointed. So, the schedule that might fit that bill is to have advertisements put out tomorrow, have an application deadline of Thursday, November 7th, giving our staff time to process them and get them ready to distribute to the board. And then hold interviews at 6:00 PM on Monday, November 11. And at 7:30 PM, we would have a motion on the agenda to appoint a selected candidate, and that candidate would take the oath and be seated that evening. Does anybody have any problems with that schedule? Or any other suggestions? Do we need a formal motion to adopt that schedule, Solicitor? You can't hurt it. So could I have a motion to adopt that schedule for our process of replacing the resigned candidate, resigned board member? Someone?
Second.
Is there any discussion of that motion? Ms. Fuller?
I just want to say, having witnessed the process several times and participating in one a very long time ago, at which time Mr. Rose was selected and I was not, I think that it's a very, it's a very useful procedure. It gives us a good indication of who the candidates are. And I remember being a candidate, I was very impressed with the process.
Anyone else wants to comment? None appearing. Ms. Bertzel, will you call roll, please?
Dr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Arndt Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Pollockano.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
So therefore, the schedule will be, we will advertise tomorrow on the webpage and send advertisements to the local newspapers tomorrow. Thursday, November 7th at 4:00 PM will be the application deadline. And Monday, November 11th, there will be interviews of prospective candidates to fill the position at 6:00 PM prior to the board meeting at 7:30 PM. Miller?
Yes. Bertzel? In the past, we've developed as a board, a list of questions that were then asked of the candidates. Probably not, we probably don't want to develop it as a committee of the whole because then, of course, people would be able to prepare their answers ahead of time and research would be, the ability would be the main differentiator. So if I could suggest, perhaps we each send one or two questions to Ms. Bertzel, and she would compile them for that evening. Is that acceptable?
Yes, I think we also could go back and look at the record for what we used the last time and have some, some of those questions available also.
Yes, I think a lot of the questions we asked the last time had to do with current legislation at that point that maybe isn't as relevant now.
Look at those, yes. So send your proposed questions to the candidates to Ms. Bertzel and try to compile a list and send it out to everybody.
And if I could just recommend just one or two each. Let's, let's not each send the...
Remember, we have to ask each of the candidates who show up and reply to these questions. I'll get through the, through them in the time between 6 o'clock and 7:30.
And guess, Mr. Fisher, if you confirm the length of the term?
It would be filling the unexpired term, so a successful appointment will serve until December of 2015.
Okay. So that'll be the process. All right, the next item I have on the agenda is the report of the superintendent of schools, Dr. Thomas Seidberg.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. First thing I want to proudly display is our manual report. I thank each member of the board, received a copy. I want to thank Nicole Boyce for her hard work in putting these together. We're very proud of this. And as a superintendent, I think all the pages are important, but certainly my favorite is the next last page when we talk about scholarships that our students received when they graduated in class last year, if you bear with me. Graduates of the class 2013 received $6.3 million worth of scholarship funds. In addition, graduating seniors last year received $1.5 million in athletic scholarships, so, and also received over $50,000 from local academic gifts. So I think those numbers speak for themselves. So I'm very proud of that as a superintendent. Last Friday, superintendents from IU 20 and IU 21 gathered at the North Hampton Colonial IU in, I guess, East Penn, I don't know the exact, I guess it was Georgetown. And we had a chance to interact with local legislators. Unfortunately, none of the folks that represent us were at the meeting, but nonetheless, it was a great dialogue. We spent a great deal of time going over special education issues. And I really want to thank the legislators for listening. And I really mean that with an emphasis on listening. I don't think they really understood what some of the issues facing us were, but I think they all left feeling a little more educated. And they've asked us to put together those issues, and some of us are, are authorized to do that. And I think there's a better clue of just exactly how deep we are concerned about special ed beating into regular ed budgets. Also, we expressed our frustration with access funds this year, and the collection has been very difficult almost since the state changed vendors. And our, and I expressed that in the district of ours, we, we had a great balance for a long period of time, and now our access funds are dwindling away, and I think every other superintendent in that room echoed that feeling. So that was the number one issue. We talked about that for about 45 minutes. Then we moved into our concerns about charter schools and cyber charter schools and funding thereof, and we certainly are grateful to the members of the House that were there. We think HR or H bill, H, House bill, 618 is a step in the right direction. I think they admit it, that it's only a step in the right direction, that there's a lot of work to be done. And of course, all this weighed in on what we thought were our concerns, and I think they heard us loud and clear that there's much work to be done, especially in accountability and funding of cyber, that would be bricks and mortar cyber school, bricks and mortar charter schools as well as cyber schools, so. And again, and the last topic, we didn't have much time, we only had about an hour and a half of them. We weighed in on the pension issue and on places to say that. I think there's, there's some willingness on members, at least that were present with us, that looks like there could be some interest in Representative Grell's bill, which is moving forward again. If you're interested in that bill, you go online and look at Representative Grell's bill, and I think that seems to be getting some traction for the legislature. So we'll see how that plays out when the legislature returns in November. This afternoon, Mr. Ballard and I had an opportunity to participate with representatives, board members in superintendents and staff members from districts like Parkland, East Penn, Salzburg is there, Bangor, Nazareth, Bethelary School District, North Hampton, Palisades, Penarcho, and Saucon Valley, had a chance to meet with Macy Rich, an assistant secretary of education from the United States Department of Education. I think the dialogue was Rich, unfortunately, so far grousing had to do with state issues. But nonetheless, I think Mr. Ballard said it well today, we're really concerned about mandates coming from Washington that are not funded well. And again, the issue of special education funding was front and center, and again, our concerns about regulations, probably looking at some type of, at least the feds ought to look at what's going on in the area of cyber education. Last week, I think Mr. Glancy and Mrs. Sertevault met with Scott Share on possible refinancing the bonds, and rather get into that tonight. Mr. Share will be here in December to discuss some options with the board. And there could be two options I'd review with you. Nothing like great savings that we've had recently, but nonetheless, something for the board to consider. And again, anything we can do in terms of next year's budget will be very good. Also, I did have a chance to talk to Susan Baker. I remembered her immediately. Susan is from the Pennsylvania Economy League, Wilkes-Barre office, and I think she was one of the principals that worked on my demographic study when I was superintendent of Haverhill. And they will be submitting a proposal to us. Hopefully, we'll have that by the next board meeting. I just want to give the board a provision, if that proposal is acceptable, they're backed up and they probably can start work here until January. But again, I don't have the numbers, but it's everything that I discussed, and they would be able to get that study accomplished sometime in April or May and have a public meeting to discuss their findings. And I think that's something that I certainly strongly recommend. But again, we'll wait and see what the proposals look like. So I think we should have that by the next board meeting. Also, want to mention a thank you to Mr. Romell and Mr. Murray for putting together the annual athletic report. And again, this has excellent information. It's not only about wins and losses, but it's about recognition for a lot of student athletes last year, and I want to commend those athletes who, we can't say anything about wins and losses, a cumulative win/lose record of 67% last year. That's pretty darn good when you consider all of our sports. And it was of all student athletes who were recognized in their respective sports. The last thing, Mr. Ballard, we're going to remind that our annual Thanksgiving luncheon for senior citizens will be held on November 14th. And are we having the right numbers registered yet?
Yes.
So we'll put a pitch out for that. We have it served at three locations, and our students love serving and our students love performing, and we love having our senior citizens with us as we can thank them for their support as well. That's all I have, Mr. Ballard.
Thank you, Dr. Seidenberger. Are there any questions or comments for Dr. Seidenberger? Ms. Donches?
Yes. Could you elaborate a little on the access funds? Is that the money, is it coming from the state?
No, it actually, well, what happened was, it's a long story. Pennsylvania was haunted by the federal government, possibly about 18 months ago. And there was a concern over things that school districts would be reimbursed for. And so the estimate after, after the feds told Pennsylvania certain things cannot be reimbursed, we estimate losing about 20% of federal access monies that we've been collecting on a yearly basis. And that are reimbursements for students who have medical issues attached to special education or Bible four plans, such things as speech therapy, nursing services. The problem with the state is they changed vendors. It used to be Leder, now it's PGC. PGC. And they have been dramatically slow, to the point where many superintendents in this county met with representatives last year, and we were assured that the flow would be better. It is not. And so we're, we're very concerned about the flow of those dollars because we do use every dollar we plow out back into our special ed programs, and if we don't get the flow again, we're looking at some dramatic numbers in next year's budgets. Just want to give you heads up. And so if you're out and about, see Representative McHannity or Senator Brown or Senator Matt Mench, please express your frustration we have, and we'll be writing letters again. And I think we're, it's just a trickle this year. Dr. Verbel?
Absolutely.
Dr. McCarrity? Our paperwork's in order. It's just not coming.
Any other comments or questions? All right, on the item 7.2 personnel, Mrs. Donches, do you want something held out of the educational conference?
Yes, I'm the common floor.
All right, with the exception of the first, the educational conference for Common Core, can we have a motion on item 7.2 personnel, please?
I'll do it.
Second. Is there any discussion on any of the parts of the personnel? None appearing. Ms. Bertzel, will you call roll, please?
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Mr. Arndt Shaw.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller. Mr. Pollockano.
Aye.
Dr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
All right, can we have a motion for the Common Core Educational Conference, please?
Don't move.
Second. All right. Mrs. Donches?
I just wanted to say that I'm gonna vote against it. I just have great concerns about continuing to spend resources when some of the revisions are still in a holding pattern.
Dr. Seidenberger?
I don't, I think the, all the changes, the revisions in Chapter 4 now have been approved by the State Board of Education, because they examined on the independent. We expect a recommendation back very soon and a governor to sign those documents. So I think most of the revisions are completed. I'm not so sure this is a conference. These are networking groups that meet. In addition to this group, we have teachers from our district that... In addition to this group, we have teachers from our district that meet with other teachers from all over the IU. We have similar groups from math. We have a middle level ELA group with language arts, English. We have a high school science group. We have an English and language arts high school group as well, science middle level, social studies high school, social studies middle level. And these are teachers that have volunteered to serve with other teachers, and I think these changes are really dynamic and very, very good, and helps us with some instructional strategies in our district. And these, this all happens under the offices of our IU.
Okay, any other comments or questions about this item? Ms. Bertschel, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw?
Aye.
Ms. Donches?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Polakana?
Aye.
Dr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Five I's, two N's.
All right. We'll now move on to item 7.3, School Nurse Staffing Services Agreement. Mrs. Donches, do you have something to add to this motion?
I guess a whole bunch of time.
All right. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
All right, has there comments on this School Nurse Staffing Services Agreement? Mrs. Donches?
I have a number of questions about the contracts themselves. I don't know if they're for the listener or... Okay. Especially the first one, by the Delta Group compared to the others, especially, it doesn't really note, and what to assume, but it doesn't really note what kinds of professionals, what kinds of professionals are being referred. There's no contact about the insurance, the certifications that the people have to have, the rates are going to be paid, the transportation will be paid. I just felt that, I didn't feel comfortable with this particular contract. Also, in the, some of the other contracts, and the dates are all, dates are given already, and I was wondering, are these renewals of existing contracts, or these are new? And so, are these contracts already in effect, given the dates that are included?
No, these contracts were requested, and they were sent into the district, they were sent to Attorney Fisher for review, and they were put on the board agenda for discussion and possible approval.
Could you just expand on Mrs. Donches' question, Delta Group? What kind of professionals are we getting from the Delta Group?
Registered nurses from the Delta Group. They have to be licensed in the state of Pennsylvania and need all the requirements, and be certified and carry a current license with the state of Pennsylvania.
And so, all of these contracts are for registered nurses?
Yes.
Have we used these groups before?
No, these, these four, these five groups, we have not used before. We typically use just one group, but they're not able to meet our needs at this point. So, we look to see what other resources are available out there. When I attended the Student Services Meeting at the CLIU, I got the referral of these five agencies from other directors of student services at that meeting.
So, is the intent, I'm trying to get some explanation from Mrs. Donches, the intent then is to have a number of groups we can go to, not going to all the groups simultaneously?
Correct. Because what would happen is we get a request, and we may get a request for a short-term nurse, so it wouldn't require the hiring of a new employee, and if it due to a medical condition of the student, a short-range medical condition, so we wouldn't hire a full-time nurse onto our staff as a permanent member of the staff. We would go to this, one of these agencies, we would put the request out to all five agencies listed here, plus our current agency we use, and then they would look to see if, within their personnel, they would be able to fill it. And then they would contact us back and say, yes, we are able to fill this, no, we are not able to fill this.
So, this is basically to widen our pool of available nurses, so we can get one in when we need one?
Absolutely. Right now, we have a current situation that we use with this one group, that until 6:00 AM in the morning, I don't know whether they're going to be able to provide a nurse for that student or not. So, we need to expand the pool in order to put that out to other agencies. So, hopefully, I can learn the day before instead of the morning of.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Pepperato? Mrs. Donches?
Yeah.
And I know you've told me before that you were pushing...
Yes.
It is important, it's no excuse, I'm sorry. Mrs. Donches?
In the SHC contract, the client obligations, number two, with letter I, it says that the client agrees that they will, for SHC personnel who are traveling away from home, will be retained for a full-time position for periods of 13 weeks, unless of course, agreed otherwise, and full-time is a minimum of 36 hours a week. So, what does that mean, traveling away from home?
We do not require a nurse to travel away from home, like on a field trip, an overnight field trip or anything like that. We would not be requiring them to travel away from home. This is strictly to meet the needs of a particular situation of the student, if we aren't able to meet with our current personnel during the school day.
And is it common for us to have the laws of the state of Utah governs the contract?
I think whatever they want, they're in Pennsylvania, lots of people.
It will, no matter what's added. And then that last clause in that particular contract, upon 30 days, notice to increase the bill rates set forth above, in the event the volume under this agreement is represented by client, any is not attained, or there is any increase in SHC burden costs as a result of governmental mandate. SHC serves the right to, upon 30 days, written notice to client increases bill rates at the beginning of each calendar year if there is an increase in healthcare costs. And is there, if they do, can we escape this, given that? Is all where you could get out of it for failure to pay invoices, the bankruptcy, or material ruin?
We don't have to select them as the vendor for the particular, for the particular situation. So, it's only applicable when they bid against anybody else.
Correct.
Dr. Ramell? Ramell?
And the time that it refers to transportation, what is that? Is that from a student's home to the school, or from the employee's transportation from their home to the school?
It's typically calculated from the point of where they're employed, their home base of where they're employed, to either the district or the residence, wherever they would meet the student. And we usually select the least amount of miles. So, if they live by the student, they'll meet at the student's residence, and they'll pick up the bus and the student at the same time, or if they're closer to the school, where the student would be going, the bus will swing around, pick them up to the school, start the trip.
Anything else, Mrs. Donches?
I think that conference, and I do feel a bit uncomfortable about that first part of things. What process do you use, and if they're automatically renewing 30 days before termination of the contract, what process is the price to catch them if you don't want to renew?
Your office, period, I'm sure you can use this time. Absolutely. Once we would have this approved, and Mr. Ballard would sign these, we would obviously get letters of notification, plus we, the contract is coming up again, and that would be mailed to us, but also it's put on a calendar in which we look and see, okay, did we use these services? Are these services, is this a group that we actually use the services from, and we would just remove them from the list and not renew any type of contract with them? But typically, there, we view our current contract with the one organization we use. At the end of June, we, that's one of our list of protocols in the summer, that we look over those and determine whether or not we're even going to seek to continue the use in the whole school year.
We're not guaranteeing any one of these companies any amount of business, are we?
No, we are not.
So, we don't have to use them if they don't pan out?
Correct. It's strictly per diem, as needed.
So, even if anything did somehow automatically renew, it just removes that we might not use them?
Correct. We would, we would use.
Any further questions, Mrs. Donches?
Thank you.
Any other questions on this motion? Ms. Bertschel, will you call the role, please?
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Donches?
Aye.
Mr. Polakana?
Aye.
Dr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Seven I's.
We have an item on performance plus tracker agreement, 7.4, can I have motion, please? Second. Discussion on this item? None appearing, Ms. Bertschel, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Earnshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Donches?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Dr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Seven I's.
All right, we have item on approval of bill this, can I have motion, please? So moved, second. Any discussion? Mrs. Donches?
I will be abstaining, as I haven't received details at all across.
Any other discussion? Ms. Bertschel, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Earnshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Donches?
Jane.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Polakana?
Aye.
Dr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Seven I's.
Six I's.
Six I's and one extension.
Is there any objection to putting together items 2, 3, and 4?
Five, including the...
Five, including the addendum, yes.
So moved. Sorry.
Any discussion? None appearing, Ms. Bertschel, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw?
Aye.
Ms. Donches?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Polakana?
Aye.
Dr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Seven I's.
All right, under new business, I've undertaken some new responsibilities, and so I'm going to ask the members of the board who might be interested in taking over some duties that I've held for a number of years in regards to legislative chair for this board and PSBA. The AIs on for this board to consider whether or not they would like to volunteer for those jobs. I presume it will be the next president who will decide all of that, but it should get in some kind of information prior to the December reorganization meeting as to whether or not you'd be interested in taking over those responsibilities. The PSBA, the AIs on gets direct communication from PSBA, and it's supposed to communicate various things to the members of the board. The legislative chair of this board has been a duty to inform the public and the members of this board of depending legislation and things that might impact this board's operation and education in general, and keep track of what's going on in Harrisburg, and try to get board members to advocate to their local legislators and members of the public to do so likewise. And so, that would be a task that also would be appointed by the next incoming president. So, if you consider that, I would appreciate it. As I said, I've taken on some extra duties, and I'm going to have to be fairly busy with those, and I need to leave myself some time. I've also asked the Assistant Regional Director for PSBA, which means the Regional Director for PSBA, to seek a new county legislative chairman to organize the annual, the two meetings a year that we typically have with our legislature, spring and fall, and find someone to take over that responsibility also. So, if you have the interest in that particular job, you can contact the Region 8 Director. Now, is there any other new business to come forward to see? Mrs. Donches?
Yes, Dr. Seidenberger, we have had a correspondence, and I thought you were going to bring up that, if you wanted to come and see the process, the incoming process.
I don't, could you speak up, because I couldn't hear what you were saying?
Yes, I had written, I had obliged the board and asked Dr. Seidenberger if I would be able to schedule some time with the staff to fully understand the accounting process and the process for producing the fund accounting check summary, and just an overall overview of the accounting system. And I was obliging the board, and then I know Dr. Seidenberger brought back to me and said that he wanted to bring it up to the board, and I think we're going to bring it up this evening.
Yeah, well, I think my recommendation is, I don't think that's a good idea. First of all, we're concerned about security, so my recommendation will be that we deny a request, Mr. Ballard.
Thank you, Dr. Seidenberger. I believe the superintendent has denied that request. If you wish to appeal to the board, on that, submit a motion for the next meeting.
All right, I would just say that I will, I thought that you were going to ask if anybody else wanted to come and look at it at the same time, I'm a little caught off guard. I guess I just can't imagine if, you know, they need to understand this to do my fiduciary responsibility, and I can't imagine, like, any of us being in a company, if our board of directors walked in and wanted to see a particular process that we would not show it to them, and I'm doing the favor of asking for an appointment, and I would really appreciate, I would really like to learn how, how everything comes together. And then again, I have so many other questions, if I understood what the process is. Oh, I would like to make a, I don't know, I don't know why we need to come to a vote, I guess maybe it's people.
Well, in order to direct the superintendent to do something the superintendent has decided not to do, we need to vote the board, because that's, the board is the only one who directs the superintendent. So, if you have such a request that you wish the board to consider, please make a motion for the next superintendent.
I just really feel that I have tried to apply to the board. First, I was asking for checks, and, you know, asking was sort of for the code, and when that got tighter some, I was asked to ask the board, or to send them ahead of time, which I do. And then I just noticed that there was a type of graphical error on this fund accounting check summary, and I was surprised, it was odd to me, because it has a, I thought it would be a pull-down, and that just speaks my interest as to really a process, and that's what I'm trying to learn, I'm trying to do my fiduciary responsibility. I feel like I have obliged the board, and I feel like I run into a roadblock everywhere I go, no matter which way I turn. So, I would like to make a motion that I, that the superintendent or his staff spend time with me to explain the process of the fund and accounting check summary report from, the whole process, just so that I understand the accounting process and how these, how these reports are presented.
We'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Thank you. I hope I understand.
Anything else to come up for new business? None appearing. We had an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss personnel, and we will have an executive session after the meeting to discuss personnel. Nothing else coming to the board at this time, will entertain a motion to adjourn? And here's an executive session after this, to discuss personnel. All those in favor, say aye. Point of, or is anything happening afterwards, the executive session, any report? Will there be official action after? No, there will be no official action after. Thank you.